... which it stands, "One Nation, Under God, Indivisible, with Liberty and Justice for All."
Okay, good evening and welcome to the April 30th, 2019 Board of Selectmen's meeting. This evening, Selectman Jimis will be absent. Selectman Supernott will be here, but a little bit late. On the agenda this evening, we have public service announcements. We have a request to vote approval for special liquor license for Ragged Hill Cider Company. A request to approve transient vendors license. We're asked to concur with an appointment of Tyler Gusterson as a labor slash driver for the DPW. Request to vote to approve a Conservation Commission Administrative Assistant Job Description and Position Ranking. Then we have Department Head Updates, Council of Aging, Water Sewer, DPW. Then we have requests to reopen and amend the special town meeting warrant, also the annual town meeting warrant. Town Administrators Update, Old Business, New Business, Correspondence, Approval of Minutes, Citizens Forum, and Adjournment. Public Service Announcement. Anything, Chase?
None.
Mary?
I just have one thing. It's kind of old news, but we haven't had a public service announcement in the last two meetings, and I want to thank the residents for re-electing me and coming out to vote. I know it was a cold, dreary day, and I appreciate the vote of confidence and being here again. So, thank you.
Okay, I just have one. There is a one-mile fun run and walk, and a 5K and 10K sponsored by the Center of Hope, and that is held. Well, entry fee should be in before 5:01, which is tomorrow. For any information, you can get in touch with the Center of Hope at ourchauvin@centertofhope.org. It will give ages and times and everything.
Before 5:01 for $30, but you can do it after.
For $40.
Yeah.
And there's a family run for $20, so... Okay. Next, we have a request for a special event liquor license for Ragged Hill Cider Company, LLC, for the Sturbridge Farmers Market. Is anyone here? Okay.
My name's Anne.
Okay, well, wait a minute till you sit. Okay, the mic's actually for the television at home.
Oh, okay. Thank you. My name is Anne Garwood. I'm a part-owner of Ragged Hill Cider Company. We're in Westbrook Field. We're making orchard-made hard cider. We've been requested to be at the Sturbridge Farmers Market this year on alternating Sundays. We have done this at other farmers' markets. We set up and we do tastings, not to exceed one-ounce pours, and we have three products. Massachusetts allows for five one-ounce pours. We only do three because we only have three products. And then we sell our closed containers of cider for off-site consumption. Is there anything else that you'd like to know?
No, any other questions from the board?
Just have a question on the voting. We have a quorum. Is it a majority of the quorum that needs to? Even if I abstain, will she? Okay. It's not personal. I'm one of those, I would prefer not having alcohol on our comments, so I've been abstaining, but I wouldn't hold you up, so if I needed to vote in favor of it, I would. But I'm happy that I can just abstain altogether, and it'll still happen.
Okay. Does someone want to make a motion then to approve special event liquor license for Ragged Hill Cider Company, LLC?
So moved.
Okay, I'll second it. Any more discussion? All in favor? Three, two, zero, one.
I just have one other question. On the one-day permit, it does say that it's $25. No, that's per day.
Per day.
So, other towns that I've done this for, where I'm doing a season, they've charged me a maximum of $50 for a season. $25 a day does come quite an expense for us.
It does, but I don't think anyone had considered that, and we've already given licenses at the 25 per day.
Per day.
Yes. So, we would have to keep in with that.
Take into consideration. Okay.
Okay, maybe for next year.
Okay.
I mean, every time something's held, you know, you learn new things.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I appreciate it. Thanks for your consideration.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have a request to vote approval of transient vendors license for Rhonda Blakely, Country Folk Art Shows Incorporated. I just had a question on this. This is being held at the host, right? I don't recall us doing transient vendors license, and hawkers and solicitors and all that actually go through the police department for a checkup, and then to the town administrator. And if everything is fine, the town administrator signs.
Well, the police, the chief did sign off on it.
Yeah. Okay, I mean, it wouldn't hurt if we did, but it's...
Okay.
My bad, I don't get the process yet.
We get very few of them.
Trust me, even in the general bylaws, it doesn't really say transient vendors license. It says hawkers and peddlers, and describes what they do, so this is kind of... So, vote wouldn't hurt. Does anybody have any question on it? Somebody want to make a motion then to approve the transient vendors license for Rhonda Blakely?
I'll make a motion to approve the transient vendors license for Rhonda Blakely.
I'll second.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor? Okay, then, there's a request to concur with the appointment of Tyler Gusterson as a labor slash driver for the DPW.
Tyler Shear?
Yeah.
Okay, would you have a seat, please? I was just going to say, normally, we get a little background.
His app was in there.
Yeah, no, it should have been in there.
Do you have it?
We can get that to you. That's...
Just the letter of...
Just your letter.
Okay. We'll get you the app.
Yeah, well, no, that's okay, but I mean, it's nice to know he lives here and not my house. You live in town, right?
Ah, yeah. I can give you the whole spiel. My name's Tyler Gusterson. Good afternoon. Nice to see all of you. I grew up in Sturbridge, up across from the state police, down off on a dead-end road off of New Boston. I've lived there for all 27 years of my life. Grew up here, went to school here, and recently got my hoisting license, and I've decided to pursue a position at the DPW because it's something I enjoy. I currently was working with Babe's Lawn Care for the last four seasons, and then with Construction Landscape Company in Uxbridge before that. I also have my bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Worcester State. I did look into that, but I enjoy being outside and the way things are going in Massachusetts right now and locally for criminal justice. It's just a difficult thing to get into without joining the military first, which I did not do out of high school, which is a little late now, I feel, to get into that aspect of it. And I enjoy being outside doing the construction, so I thought the DPW would be a good spot for me when I saw the opening.
Okay, any questions?
I think that's great, and it's great that you're local. I mean, snowstorms, you'll be right here, and yeah, that's great.
Okay, now, you have no problem with any of the conditions listed from the town administrator?
No, they all work for me.
Yeah. Okay, so, does somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to concur with the appointment of Tyler Gusterson as a labor driver for the DPW.
I will second.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor? Okay, three to nothing. Good luck.
Thank you.
Enjoy. Hope you like outdoors when it gets really cold and snowy.
Do you have an expected start date?
It was May 1st tomorrow. I wanted to talk to Butch about that, because it does have a physical and a drug test as a pre-employment, so I wanted to make sure how that was going. Expected to come in in the morning, or if I have to do those first?
Well, if you wouldn't mind, he shouldn't be in that meeting too long.
Yeah, he said he was.
Okay. Okay, next, we have Department Head Updates. Oh, no, we have a request to vote approval of the Conservation Commission Administrative Assistant Job Description and Position Ranking. Jeff?
Yeah, it should be a four, and the date of approval by the Personnel Committee was April 16.
Yes. I thought.
Yeah, it was a four.
Did we not have a job description before?
No, that's why we did it.
Oh, okay.
Whereas the others did a requesting review of theirs. We'll do that, you know, if that warrant-type article passes. But on this one, there was never a job description or a grade that could be found, so there'll be advertising for someone, so it's nice to have. So, any questions on the job description or grade? Okay, then, is there a motion to approve the job description and grade?
Make a motion to approve the Conservation Commission Administrative Assistant Job Description.
And grade?
And grade.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Okay, Department Head Updates. We have the council on aging, and Heather is not here, but we do have her printout of... She says the following activities have either been continued or added. And, second page, she's had what's happening, things going back to October, and what do we have planned, things going forward, including the May 31st, their first Annual Senior Center Showcase Open House, and then things in June. And they're also planning some concerts on the lawn in June, July, and August. And there's a blood drive July 8th, and she has all this on her web page for the senior center. Any comment or questions on that report?
I have not.
Mary?
I don't have any questions.
Okay, we do have Shane and...
You're the only one.
Oh, just in time. What's that old song, "I Found My Love Just in Time"? Good evening, Shane.
Good evening. How you doing?
Good.
I submitted the reports for operation reports for February and March. I'll start with any questions you have on those.
Anyone have any questions? For once, I don't.
Well, they're good. You're in compliance for zinc.
Yep.
No violations by haulers, which is always my question.
Yeah. That's where Mary's going.
And, you know, so I was happy.
With all the rain, it must be positive for you, right? Everything must be...
Well, I heard a conversation earlier about how wet it is. The flows are up, but it took a while. This last, you know, this last weekend, they were up high, but the plant still has extra capacity at this point. We're not having any issues, so...
It's going to be a dry May.
Won't be any water bans. I guess there's two ways to look at it.
That's true. That's true. So, does anyone have any question on the March? I'm getting off easy tonight.
That's why I like it. The hydrant flushing is probably 80% done, probably finish up in the next two weeks, like we do twice a year. I submitted the state report as required by regulation. Our uncounted flow of water is down to 3%. Requirement's under 10, so... And we did a leak detection last fall, and we only found one leaking hydrant, and that was it. So, our system's pretty tight. We're not losing a lot of water in the ground.
Are all the hydrants in working condition?
I had one fixed yesterday, 'cause I knew you were going to ask. So, yeah, all the public hydrants are working, and we'll be going, after we get done flushing, we go back and check them all, just to make sure they're all operational. We also changing a bunch of them out. We have five or six in stock right now. They have homes, designated places, and then in this year's budget, we budgeted for 10 more, too. So, some of the hydrants are from the late 50s and early 60s, and we fixed them a bunch of times. It's just time to replace them. The CCR is done. I actually finished it this morning and got DEP's approval. I just got to work with Jeff on setting up the link for the website, which I'll be doing in the next couple of weeks, and then we'll mail out the postcards to all the customers. Zinc, the pilot is finished. I'm waiting for the final report from Evoqua, but we had really, really a lot of success, to the point where it's down to almost nothing. So, I don't want to sit here and tell you that our zinc issues are over, but it's definitely looking very positive. We're also going to be able to use the equipment that we already have on site, so it's not a big capital cost or anything, which is what we were trying to achieve, and we just have to simply add another chemical. At least, that's the way it's looking right now. With the flows being up, everything gets diluted, so when summer comes and the flows come way back down, that'll be the true test. But when we did the pilot, the flows weren't very high either, so... And we yielded good results, so, again, I'm not saying we're in the clear, but we're definitely heading in the right direction.
That's good.
Yeah, that took a few months of investigating.
It's been a couple of years we've been working on this.
Four years? I thought it was six months.
So, and just in time for, we'll be filing for a new permit, so we'll have to wait and see what's in there when that finally comes out.
And when do you file for the new permit?
It's due by June 30th, so we've been working on it. It's a pretty lengthy application.
And how long is that permit for?
Five years, once they issue it, but it's my understanding that they're really behind in issuing permits right now.
Meaning, how behind, like?
I've heard five to seven years.
Wow.
State?
That's what I heard.
Yeah.
Yeah, don't quote me on that.
I thought you were going to say a few months.
No, no, they're behind, it's a moment. And it is what it is. I'm really, I knew a permit's just going to be stricter anyways, so, to be honest with you, I'm not in any hurry.
Okay, anything else?
No, everything else, besides that, everything's going good.
Okay, anything else from the board?
No.
Okay, thank you. Have a good night.
Two.
Thank you.
Butch?
I'll go the same route as Shane, and we have two reports for February and March. Any questions on those?
Nope. Street sweeping and coal patching and...
Yeah. Well, this is not, it's current, it's obviously February, March.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
So, now, we're doing a lot of street sweeping and patching and ready for summer. Actually, we started mowing today, too.
Now, when does the roads program begin?
Well, it depends. I'm going to have to rebid it, and there's a couple of problems I found with the bid, so I'm going to rebid everything, but it'll be quick. And I'm actually trying to get Clark Road done quicker, because I'm getting a lot of complaints. It's in tough shape. But the turnpike, not the turnpike, but the state has a water contract at the end of the street. There's two houses at the end of the street that are contaminated with salt from the turnpike. They've agreed to put in a water system, not a water system, but extend our water system to their homes at their cost. And Lynch is doing the job, so I'm trying to get them in there quick, so we can do the whole road in one shot. So, that's my goal, and my goal is also try to get that in by July 1st, and then we'll do Farquhar and it's Willard, Willard Road this year. That'll be the three. And then I have a bunch of Beaver issues, which I'm sure you all know about, and I'm working on, with Jeff, we're going to work on some solutions. We have a couple Beaver experts coming in. We're going to take a look at all that. And Shampwood Road Bridge update, I got, let's see, did you get the copy of the letter from Stephanie Pollak?
No.
I asked Todd Smola to push this on our behalf. We apparently have the Secretary of Transportation, and she sent the letter. Oh, no, I'm sorry, he sent it to her. Just asking on our behalf to push that funding through. It's there, it just hasn't been approved yet, as you all know.
Right.
So, and if this doesn't work, I'm going to send another letter. I may haven't figured out exactly what I'm going to do with it, but I'm going to put the cost that we've incurred on our own, because we've put almost like $97,000 of our own money into this project, so they need to know that, and then we're waiting on the funding. And what else we could...
This is good, though, Butch, I mean...
Well, I think it's just stagnant, and if nobody says anything, we'll stay that way.
Yeah, we've asked every so often, but I guess not often enough.
So, even when it's earmarked, they don't always appropriate.
It's on the governor's desk, the way I understand it. It's up to him to sign it. I don't know what else is in the bill. Maybe there's something...
He doesn't want to say.
Maybe there's no fund or money for it, too. I don't know. And the other thing I was going to bring to your attention is the INI study was submitted in December by Tygen Bond. It came back, it's not rejected, but it came back with they want more, more information. So, I'm meeting with Tygen Bond this week, and we're going to resubmit by the end of this month. Then after that, we'll have to talk about funding, whatever it is that they approve for our submittal. And just for your information, we have about $3.5 million in our Chapter 90, or we will have when we get our this year's allotment.
Are you happy? Do you think that's a good amount?
That's, yes.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
That's what I'm thinking. If we can't get that bridge funded, we really could do it ourselves.
We don't want to say that too loudly.
Yeah.
Don't want anyone to hear us.
We're broke, remember that.
Depends on how critically we want to do it.
Do we appear all the patches on Route 20 and 131, or does it...
No, we only appear, we appear anything around any of our manholes or our water gates.
Okay, because it's this, like, big hole in between, coming down 20, kind of by that church when you leave Friendly's, one of the roads. It's a big, like, hole in the...
By the state barn?
Yes, you know, across...
I'll check it out tomorrow. If it's anything to do with us...
I just know, I mean, I'm sure other walkers notice it, too, but when I run, it's gotten worse, and...
Well, we're going to start doing...
There's going to be trips on that. It's not going to be good.
We're going to start doing all the manholes, too, going westbound. I don't know if you noticed it.
Yeah, there are.
Almost every manhole's sinking, and they're all ours.
Right.
We're going to start working on that.
You going to put risers in?
We're going, most of the time, it's the bricks underneath, the frame, that are starting to go bad, so we'll open them up and see what it is. If it's just a riser, we can do that. If not, we'll just rebuild the collar.
Yeah. I aim my car when I go.
I think we all do.
And now and then you forget, and it's clunk.
That's all I got.
Okay, anything else?
Traffic calming.
Chase?
I do have a quick question. You know they're doing some construction on 20 right after Cracker Barrel coming this way?
Yeah.
They did quite a few nice plantings in there, and I know this is a question probably for the Betterment Committee, but something to get the ball rolling. Those nice plantings over there, and then the islands in front of the state barn here?
Yeah.
I want, that state owns those islands, correct?
Yeah, they, people, those are volunteers that do those.
Right. I was wondering if we could get something in, rolling, you know, for next year to get some plantings in those islands. Do we have to ask the state for permission to do that?
I would think so.
Yes, they have.
Because I know Sturbridge Pottery's in there, and there's another company in there.
Tassie Oil.
But I didn't know if they're doing that small, I've asked this for years.
Yeah.
I don't know if they're doing that small section, or if they adopted the entire island, because if they did adopt...
No, I don't believe they, I don't believe they mow it. They just take care of their little...
Oh, yeah, so we could have our own.
But it always has to go through the state, because I know they have, you know, restrictions. They don't want trees and bushes that grow so high and...
Because the plantings that they're doing by Cracker Barrel over there, pretty nice. I mean, they're doing, you know, quite a few little pine trees and just something to break in.
Is that over by the Pike entrance you're talking about?
Yeah, right by the Pike entrance there. Yeah, right by those islands.
That would be a big improvement coming into town, and it'd be relatively inexpensive.
Yeah.
Well, we do have the money and vetement that goes toward the pots, and then goes toward, what's the other group, flower, the ones that do the urns.
Right.
I mean, I know we'd be a year out, but if we could ask permission and maybe kind of do some, for next year, do something nice up in those islands, then...
Some perennial bushes that would just, even for cythia, something.
I can't imagine they'd have a problem with it.
The Bloom Committee, yeah. Yeah, the Bloom Committee are the ones that do the...
Block the vision of the traffic or something.
Front of the town hall.
Happy to have us maintain anything of theirs.
Two of the common. The others are the pot people.
But those are three large triangles. I mean, that's a lot of real estate.
Yeah, we could do something really nice there.
And, you know, it's a small amount of money for, I think, a big payback. We, some people wanted to wait, because we're always talking about, you know, reconfiguring that area, but that's millions of dollars. This is a few thousand.
Right.
Big difference.
Although, isn't the state still thinking of, you know, writing turns out of New Boston and then...
That's one of the theories I heard.
Yeah, then coming up and changing a little bit up here.
I think they're waiting for us to decide what we want to do.
Oh, well, they ought to ask us, give us the money and...
Yeah, that's how the process, I believe, works, that we have to come up with what we want to do, and then they put it on a tip.
Yeah.
And then we get the, we pay for the part of the engineering, and then when we get to a certain point, they stop it.
Yeah, because I know the last time they sent us information, the way they spoke, it was like ahead of other projects, but other towns wouldn't think that way, have to go through, you know. So, anything else for us?
Just Mr. Gusterson.
We've already done it.
Oh, have you?
Yeah. We're moving along quickly.
He's just going to talk to you, but when he starts with...
I'm good, then.
Okay, so, thank you. Good night.
Bye, Butch.
Okay, now, next on the agenda, we have a request to reopen the warrant for the special town meeting. Let's see, I kind of put a lot of things here together.
It would be Article 58 that we want to amend, actually, put the dollars in for the police contract.
Yes. Okay, so, is there a motion then to reopen the warrant for the special town meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, so, Article 58, funding for police union contract. Okay, and you have the dollar amount, Jeff?
It's on the back of Barbara Berry's memo.
Oh, the other.
She's got a full motion written up for that. If not, you can use mine?
Oh, I took.
There it is, right under that.
Yes, this is to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $144,864 to the following accounts. FY '18 salaries and wages retro account, $45,116. FY '18 overtime retro account, $12,660. FY '19 salaries and wages, $67,130. FY '19 overtime account, $19,950, for the purpose of funding the police union contract for fiscal year 2018 and fiscal year 2019, or take any action relative thereto. Is there a motion to place and support?
You don't want me, I don't care. Go ahead.
I'll let you go.
Okay. I make a motion to vote, I make a motion to place and support the changes to Article 58 on the special town meeting warrant, as stated by our chair.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Okay, now we need a motion to close the special town meeting warrant.
I'll make a motion to close the special town meeting warrant.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, now we need a motion to reopen the 2019 annual town meeting warrant.
So moved.
Okay, so we need a vote on the motion for the Tintasca.
Summon seconds, the motion to reopen.
Seconds, yeah.
Sorry.
All in favor?
All in favor. Just thought I'd be outta here early. Okay. This is the, is it Article 40? This is actually the...
It's in the same memo as Barbara?
Yeah. Yeah, it's Article 40, and this is the wording from Tintasca, who had their bond counsel do the writing. And it's slightly different, but serves the same purpose and money amount as what we voted on before. So is there someone wishing to make a motion to reconsider Article 40?
So moved.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Okay, now a motion to approve the new wording for Article 40?
I'll make a motion to approve the modified language for Article 40, as stated in our new draft.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, and also on Article 30. Is there a motion to reconsider Article 30? It's the fluoride saturator system for water treatment plants. They discussed it, and they're not going with the fluoride saturation system. They're going with the fluoride analyzers. Is there a motion to reconsider?
I think a motion to reconsider Article 30.
I'll second it. Any discussion? Jeff?
The number should be 10,000.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah. Shane says we need two of them. They're $3,500 apiece and $1,500 worth of parts.
Oh, I was just going with the... I didn't even notice we saved money. I just noticed that it was the analyzers instead of the saturators. Okay, all in favor? Okay. Okay, that's 30, 40. Now, in the line item budget. Oh, we don't carry this. It's the merit pay, so if you have your FinCon book. Okay, it's the, under Town Administrator, it's the merit-based pay incentive. There's requests to change the amount. So is there a motion then to reconsider the merit-based pay incentive line?
I'll make a motion to reconsider the merit-based pay line.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, is there a motion then to approve the merit-based pay incentive at $27,999?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, now, that'll also change the total personnel cost.
I mean, that's a later motion in the budget, I think. No?
No. It's, should be right here. Should be line item three.
All right, I'll ask Barbara once.
Well, it's, if I didn't flunk math, it's for a total of $216,684.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Gonna trust Mary's math.
I trust her.
Well, we can always reopen. Thanks for the vote of confidence. Okay. Why do I have numbers? Oh, the next one is the adjust police personnel costs, salaries, and overtime. So that's going up to, toward line 66. It's not the line itself, but it's the salary and wages line item. Is there a motion to reconsider that line?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Three to nothing. Okay, is there a motion then to change that to $2,157,296?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, so then the total, oh, is that, nope. Overtime. Is there a motion to reconsider the overtime amount?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Is there a motion then to put the new amount of $424,696?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? So that will be a total personnel cost line item 66 of $2,741,434.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, facilities coordinator, coordinator salary. Let's see. Probably forget where that is. Oh, we have the landfill first, sorry. That's up by, close to 99. Jeez. Okay, is there a motion then to reconsider line item 99?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, is there a motion to put in the new amount of $156,160?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, now the facilities, if I can find it. Did you find it?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, what line item is it close to?
Uh, 50.
That's right. Got it written right here, too. Quick youth. Okay, is there a motion then to reconsider the department head salary under facilities?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Is there a motion then to put in the new amount of $65,000?
So moved.
Second. Discussion.
Jeff, you wanna explain?
Yeah, we've recruited twice for this position and are unable to find any candidates we would feel worthwhile in hiring. And looking at what other people are recruiting for, our salary was significantly lower. So we felt offering a higher salary would find more attractive candidates, basically.
And this position requires a bachelor's degree? What, what requirements for...
I can grab the job description for you real quick.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, let me get that.
What's that?
I'll tuck this away. It's so heavy.
Usually I leave mine in my...
Cubby?
Yeah, I always leave it in the cubby. That's why I thought I had it.
Well, you thought we were done.
It's probably in my car.
It's in my, yeah, seat of my truck. I know.
It's my little office back there.
Right, me, too.
So when's Matt get out?
Another, um, he's out of his classes, but he's got two weeks of exams. He graduates Memorial Day weekend. A little bit later than some, I know. I can't believe it. We're on the air. I'm Captain Brown, and you know I'm emotional, so I can't cry.
Oh, yeah, you'll be a basket case for two weeks before, two weeks after. I shouldn't chuckle.
If I may?
Yes.
Uh, the education and experience, high school education, associate's degree in building systems, engineering or maintenance preferred, seven years of facility management and/or building maintenance required, of which three years have been a supervisory position. HVA certificate, master electrician or master plumber, and/or building construction supervisor license preferred, or any equivalent combination of education, experience, and licenses. I think what's driving this number is we want certified people.
Yeah, absolutely.
And they can make more money in the private sector.
Yeah.
Right.
If they're licensed.
Yeah, a master's electrician or a plumber.
HVAC can work as much as you want.
Thank you.
It's a shortage in the trades, that's for sure.
Now, did we vote?
No, we didn't.
No. No.
That was discussion. All in favor? Okay. Okay, next we have town administrators update.
Did we do the...
We didn't close it, did we?
Oh, no, we gotta close. Is there a motion to close the annual town meeting warrant?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Now, the only warrant article that we didn't make a recommendation on was the signs at the cemetery, but we did place it.
There's three others you haven't acted on. They're highlighted in your warrants and your binder. $9,500 for gravestone restoration, $1,000 for the signs, and the grand trunk feasibility study trail. Article 5, 8, and 9. Janey has highlighted the ones that... And I think...
Well, we did vote to place Article 5. We didn't, we didn't have any information on what they were.
They wanna come back, they wanna come to you at the meeting on the 6th and answer all your questions.
Yeah, that's okay, and then we can make a recommendation either then or the night of.
Okay.
'Cause we didn't know if they wanted to be in it, or just whatever they're doing. What's the other one?
Uh, the grand trunk trail. Again, they wanna come and answer questions and give you kinda the scope of the project and where they are. So they were looking to come on the 6th as well. So there were Article 5, 8, and 9.
Yeah.
5 and 9 are both from the Historic Society.
Yeah, we, um, we voted just to place, but that's okay if they wanna come in.
Okay.
Okay, so then we're pretty well set. For tonight. Okay, now town administrators update.
Thank you. The apartments that had the fire on Easter Sunday, 28 of the units are now occupied. The Health Department signed off on eight more today. There's still 16. The eight on the bottom floor that were impacted directly by the fire, then the eight above those. So there's still quite a few units that are not habitable, but they keep working on getting more and more open.
Are those, are they still being housed in the, at the owner's expense?
Yes. Yeah, I don't know if they're all still at the hotel, but they all have found other living arrangements for now. Yep. Um, the position for administrative assistant to the town administrator and board of selectmen has closed recruitment, and we've been interviewing this week and next. Hopefully, we'll have a recommendation soon. We attended, Jean Bouvan, town planner Chris Gary, and I, we attended the Green Community Grant Award Ceremony in Truesberry. The town has received a grant of $143,757 for energy upgrades to town facilities. The Route 20 parking request for proposal is under review, and we should have it presented to you shortly. The town has met with three interested groups regarding the sale of recreational marijuana. These groups are gonna come to you on May 6th, and it looks like May 6th is beginning to be quite a long meeting, so you may wanna start earlier, if that's something you wanna discuss later on.
That's Monday, right?
Right.
Yeah, I have no problem with it.
Mary, what about you?
I can start earlier.
Yeah.
Okay, what time would you like to start? 5:30?
5:30 works for me, yeah.
What about 5? Is that too, too early?
No, 5, I can do 5.
Yeah, 5.
5. So we'll set the meeting for 5. Sounds good.
Okay, the, speaking of the marijuana, you did get the letter from Heal?
I did.
Also.
And we've, go ahead.
No, I was gonna say, is that one of the three?
Not at this time. I think that's a conversation, if you wanna have, after the end of these presentations, if you wanna open that up and have Heal come in and speak, that's okay, too.
Yeah.
Or if you want us to go ahead and put them on for the 6th, we can.
Yeah, put them on and see if they can come in, and also if Janey could make a copy of... Don't need the whole thing, 'cause we do know the agreement, but their letter requesting that they be considered, seeing as they already have their medical license, and had said that, you know, they would wait to 2021, but whereas other people are coming in, and we're limited on the number of recreational licenses we can give, that they would like to be considered. So do you have Jeff's letter? You could copy that for the rest of the board. That would be good. Okay, Jeff, sorry.
No problem. No, it's good stuff. Okay. The Arbor Day tree planting will be May 3rd at 5:30 on Stallion Hill Road at the OSV entrance. I think that's this Friday at 5:30.
Yeah, it's already May.
And then I gathered up all the different facility studies, and there's kind of a lot of them of different facilities. So I'll be going through those and getting at least initial thoughts on process and priorities to the, to the board of selectmen in the next few weeks. I also met with the seniors today on their project, and I told them I'd be putting an RFP together over the next three weeks for getting a new architect on board to solicit proposals to do their feasibility study, and maybe in time if we have a fall town meeting for funding. So they were okay with that. And that's, that's all I have this evening, unless there's any questions.
Any questions on the report, or? Okay. Old business. Chase?
I have no old.
Mary?
I really sometimes don't know if something's considered old or new. It's kind of a mix, but the search committee, at some point, we need to dissolve.
Yeah.
I don't know if that has to be an agenda item, but...
Well, no, you can just make a motion right now.
Okay. Is that appropriate?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we dissolve the town administrator's search committee.
Sure, you wanna do that?
Yes.
At least still the probation period's over.
No. Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Okay, Bill will be happy to know.
Yes, I know. And I wanna, and also thank everybody that volunteered on that. It was a very rewarding, but also time-consuming project for, and our chair and vice chair, Bill Hagerty, and our chief forward did a very good job on being in the leadership role.
Thank you to all. You guys did a great job.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, so far it's...
Appreciate it very much.
Yeah, no, so far it's...
28 days in.
Everyone's impressed.
28 days?
I don't know, something like that.
Wow.
Well, yeah. Must be April 1st. Okay, new business. Chase?
No, no.
Mary?
I know, I, Mary and I talked about it, but I think, I know when Leon came on board, we had a reception to introduce our town administrator to the vol, you know, the committees, residents, volunteers. I didn't know if that's, I'm putting him on the spot. I didn't know if that's something that you would be amenable to, and...
Whatever you're comfortable with. I know most towns and cities do that.
And we do, too, so...
I think that'd be fine, and my wife would come up for that, so people can meet her, too, and she can meet people.
Yeah, so maybe a time that's, can talk to our chair about a time that's good for you.
Yeah.
Where did we, where was it with Leon? He waited a long time because he wanted his wife to be able to go. It was almost like a year later.
Yeah, didn't we have it here?
I thought we had it here.
I was gonna say, Janey, do you remember?
She wasn't...
I know, she wasn't here. Yeah, we had it here, because, um, yeah, I think, yeah, it was during the day.
I think so. I mean, it might be better to have it at night, because...
More people.
Yeah, residents are working.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Even our committee people are working. I think it would be just staff that would come. You already know.
They've met me.
Yeah.
Yeah, they won't show up.
So at a night, that would work.
Yeah.
Sure, we'll, we'll look at some calendar days. Absolutely.
Just not July 4th.
No.
Sometime in May, first of June.
Yeah.
Before or after town meeting? Would you prefer it before or after town meeting?
Maybe after. Everyone's still, it's prom and graduation and...
So we'll do it after town meeting?
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Which is coming up on us.
Yes.
And I have one other old business. Are we still moving forward with doing a, a study of Fak, on Memorial Day weekend, of Fakar Road's traffic? Were, didn't we talk about doing that?
Oh, yeah, for the holiday.
For the holiday.
Yeah.
For Memorial Day, 'cause I noticed even at Easter.
Easter was bad.
It was very bad.
Fakar Road? Fakwa Road?
Well, it's, Priscilla really was pushing for Fakwa Road, but the planning board had requested that if there's a study done, that it should be done on all roads in town. Because Hall Roads impacted, Haynes Roads impacted, Old Route Fifteen's impacted.
Right, Old Route Fifteen in a big way.
Fakwa's not the only one, and Easter Sunday, it was basically an hour that was bumper-to-bumper. So that was mild.
Right.
Because on the.
Around the time of the fire, because it wasn't even shut down.
It's related to, you know, our interim looked into it, and the first step in terms of cutting off, is it whoever reroutes, it's not Google.
Waze.
Waze, thank you. Waze will reroute when there's a lot of traffic on the Pike, and we're impacted a lot because we're, where the Pike and eighty-four meet. And we've noticed probably in the last year.
Yeah, since the toll booths have been removed.
Right.
Yeah, even before that, on Fakwa, people have always.
Yeah, and we don't know if the bridge can handle it, I mean, massive traffic cutting through Sturbridge.
Okay.
So the, he had looked into it, and the first step was this traffic study, and that's where we left it, and we haven't had it yet, we were going to wait for a major holiday, and I thought the board discussed Memorial Day.
Yeah.
Which was coming up.
If we get it arranged, we'll, we'll make it happen. Was Chief Ford in the middle of this, anywhere?
I don't know if we even consulted him at this point about it.
Yeah, because it's not just so much the traffic, it's the tractor trailers.
All right, let's see what we can do.
Yeah, we wanted to. See what's.
If we can't hit Memorial, we'll hit, we'll hit July.
Fourth of July, fourth of July.
We'll get more of those.
To close it to only, you know.
And I'm always, I'm always amazed that you never see the traffic backed up going the other way. These people never seem to go home. They just, they just go one way. But the problem is the design of eighty-four and the Mass Pike. You have two lanes of eighty-four going into the Mass Pike that has two lanes and the Mass Pike coming, but those four lanes are going down to two lanes heading east, so, you know, it's bumper-to-bumper, it's.
So what is it, that we, we want to study the local roads, or the state roads off the eighty-four?
Well, I guess it was finally, wasn't it voted that just to study Fakwa, even though that was not the planning board recommendation? And I think Priscilla's idea was to prohibit tractor trailers.
But I would support the planning board's recommendation to study all, all those roads that are affected in a major, major way. And maybe to close, I guess Ted had said, if we can show that hardship in terms of our traffic, that ways will not, you know, that you can't reroute through Sturbridge, or something like that, we want to stop.
And then there was also, I know Mike had mentioned that you can actually contact ways and.
There are ways to do that.
Yeah.
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 See, knock it off, don't put it up there.
Because I don't even know if that bridge accommodates track, is it the weight limit?
It's weight limit, you can only get one vehicle across at a time.
Yeah, and that's getting.
Yeah, it's kind of an Indiana Jones thing, isn't it?
Yeah, and the, the bridge itself structurally is not very good.
All right, so I'll get with Jean and dig up those notes from that meeting, and we'll see what we can do.
Okay. Any other?
Nope, that's my two.
Okay, correspondence?
Okay. Correspondence dated April thirtieth, April thirtieth. April first, Charter of Communications, two thousand and eighteen Annual Form 500 outage report. April first, Charter of Communications, Mass programming notification. April tenth, DCR Massachusetts approval letter. Tree City USA and Tree City USA Growth Award. April twelfth, from Charter, again, Mass upcoming changes. April seventeenth, Community Food Collaborative, a letter of appreciation. April eighteenth, Sturbridge Conservation Commission, proposed alum treatment of South Pond. April eighteenth, from the Town of Palmer, a letter regarding the East-West Passenger Rail Service. April twenty-two, from the CMR PC, a public meeting notice. And I had received a telephone call, and then I called the woman back, but she couldn't speak at the time. But I told her I'd raise it, that it's been a concern. She said it's a real hardship for her, that there's no public transportation in Sturbridge at all to the grocery store or this type of thing, and she was hoping that at some point in time, some transportation would be afforded for, you know, everybody, but particularly people of lesser means that don't have cars, that would use public transport, so.
Yeah, I know it's been brought up to Central Mass and all that.
Right.
And there is the, through the senior center, elder bus available for things like shopping and doctor's appointments and things, but.
She didn't tell me what her age was, so. And now the elder bus is only for the seniors' use?
I believe so.
Okay.
Jeff? Do you want to do the letter support for the rail?
Yeah, I was going to ask, did, did, was it prepared, did Mike prepare it?
No, I was going to ask if you wanted to, if you wanted us to do that.
I.
If you want to send that.
I would be in favor of it.
Sure.
All right.
Did, was Mike going to draft? Mike was going to draft.
Originally, Mike was going to draft something, but I.
I want to just coordinate with him.
Right, yeah, because we had, we had voted to have him draft it, and for your, but, so maybe the two of you can talk, and.
Yeah, and you can even lift some of these things from the Palmer letter, they had a charrette, and just change the name.
Some quotes, I hope, if it's plagiarism.
Well, no, I mean, this is, this, part of this also says, you know, even a stop in Palmer how it would affect this area, too, but, you know, we would also like a stop. But I got a email, too, on how negative I was on the railroad. I had to let the person know I was not against the railroad, I just said it would be so far out of happening that it would not be in my lifetime.
You gave a realistic comment.
That's right. Goes to show you shouldn't be realistic. And I did get a letter from, I can't think of his name already. Lucas McGomid. He's the new district director for Ian Goby. As part of my duties, I will be present in town once a month. However, should you require it, I can be available for meetings by appointment. It is my hope that you will consider me to be a partner and a resource within Senator Goby's office. I look forward to serving your community and working closely with you as needed. Please do not hesitate to contact me if Senator Goby can be of any assistance. So I do know they do list in the newspaper where her representatives, and in this case, Lucas now, what towns they're going to be in and everything, so.
I met him in Shrewsbury.
Oh. Okay, so, do you have his card?
I do.
Oh, okay.
If you.
But I'll give you the letter and everything for the.
Yeah, that would be good.
Files. Okay, that's all the correspondence I had. Okay, next we have approval of minutes. We have the February second, two thousand and nineteen retreat.
I'll make a motion to approve the February second, two thousand and nineteen Board of Selectmen retreat minutes.
Okay, just one correction, it was at the Public House, not Town Hall.
Oh, right.
Nothing against Town Hall, but.
Right, good catch.
Okay, any other corrections or additions?
Motion hasn't ended.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Okay, next we have the April first, oh, April first team, April first. Janay, on page four, under correspondence, the second one, P. Jimmies, mentioning an email.
I took a.
I think stab. It stuck. And also, on page three, we had accepted the resignation of Ashley from the conservation, but didn't write after that, we appointed her as a dispatcher. Maybe I miss it, is it there?
No, I do know that she didn't, she's leaving the town.
There's Rebecca, wasn't it, that left Conservation?
Ashley's a dispatcher.
I, no, I mean facilities manager.
I think.
Oh, this is, okay, sorry.
Different Ashley.
Yeah, no, got the wrong.
Okay, yes, yes.
We don't have those minutes yet.
Ash. But we did do, we regretted that, and then we appointed her.
Then we appointed her to something, these people that jump around, Janay. Okay. Anybody else have anything? Okay, is there a motion to approve with that one amendment?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, then we have the April tenth. Any corrections, additions?
I think, hold on.
Looks better in color.
No, we don't have a colored scanner. I just want to see, oh my gosh. It's probably here, but I'm just. I'm just not seeing it, Janay, but it may very well be here, so I'll just ask you. I made a motion to support one of Mike Suppanot's suggested warrant articles, but it wasn't. I think it was two oh, actually, I think Chase also supported it for the Route Twenty, is that here?
It is, I read it.
Motion fails, I'm sorry, it is here?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I just have one. I have one sentence to add.
Okay.
On page eight, when we're talking about additional parking at the senior center, can you add, after the sentence, M. Dowling suggested it should be placed, but wanted more information from M. Supinar? She requested that, as a courtesy, the board vote on it when he returns.
Okay.
But I didn't make it a motion. And that's it.
Okay, anything else, anyone?
No.
Okay, is your motion to approve is amended?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, citizens forum, there are none. So somebody, because Priscilla's not here.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Well, that was quick.
Yeah, the next one won't be, so we have to be grateful for this meeting.
That's right. Walt might be surprised if he shows up late.
Oh, I have some stuff for you to sign.
Can I ask a question, may I? Talking about those plantings, on the next meeting when everybody's here, can we take a vote to contact the state to?
Oh, sure.
Yeah, you know, see what the.
See what the procedure is, and then.
Yeah, we can bring it up.
Work on.
Bring it up on their old business.
I'm happy if you do. I've been wanting this for a long time. I mean, we, the town could adopt the remaining part of it. As long as, as long as the task isn't Sturbridge Pottery.
Oh, come.
I mean, we can't step on their toes, but I think they just maintain their own little section.
Special town meeting to like put on the landscape architect or something.
That would be, exactly.
Really get the ball moving for the spring, so.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Bring it up at the next one.
For the state first, to see if we can even get that.
Right, but you could make a motion asking the board to support, contact them, because then there's like an actual motion, and then Jeff will move more on a motion. I mean, he'd do it anyway, you know what I mean?
Right, yeah, we'll do it.
Because we've never been able to get it that far.
Yeah, we're.
Right, we'll see what.
Yeah, we're done.
I even used to bring it up to Fin.
I'm just signing the.
Kelly's late.
Well, they don't do policy, no, that's one of the reasons I left them, but, well, the ambulances, they walk on the grass sometimes.